I'm Renee Oldham. I'm with the Mount Vernon Education Foundation. And it's just a real pleasure for us to be able to participate in working this to our Mount Vernon community tonight. So Dr. Parker has agreed to be our timekeeper for this evening. And we will be on time because he is the master of time. So I'm lucky to have him in my first line. So we'll go through that process. We've got about two minutes. We'll get ready to get started. Oh, I think there was one more thing you need to say. The microphones are very sensitive. And so we'll talk about that. But it obviously can be as quiet as possible because it will pick up on that. And we don't want to be disrespectful to the candidates, whether they're alone or listening. We want them to be able to do what actually the whole conversation event. So I just wanted to share that with you while we were on live.
It's Jack practicing.
We're ready to get started. All right, thanks. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Mount Vernon 2002 School Board Candidate Forum. The Mount Vernon Education is pleased to provide this evening's forum to help voters learn more about the three candidates applying for the two open school board positions. I'm Renee Oldham, Executive Director of the Mount Vernon Education Foundation, and I will serve as your moderator this evening. I would like to thank our three candidates, Kelly Freeman, Shannon Walls, and Josh Worth, for agreeing to participate in this evening's forum. Thank you very much. School boards play a very unique role in our school district's governance and provide a venue for communities to have democratic input into local education decisions. An effective school board member is executing their responsibilities, clearly understands the importance of the district governance, and has strong commitment to advancing student outcomes. The school board election results will direct impact, directly impact on the future direction of our school corporation. So I wanted to go over sort of the rules for this evening because this is the first time we've been able to have a live audience. So if you would just bear with me for a few little housekeeping. Audience members, if you could please turn off your cell phones or place them in silent mode. Please no clapping, cheering, calling out aloud during the forum. If you choose to do so, the moderator reserves the right to ask disruptive audience members to leave. Any promotional sign, teachers, and campaign literature will not be allowed in the forum room. All candidates have been provided with the questions in advance. And during the forum, there is no opportunity for candidates to be asked questions from those attending in the audience. The candidates forum will be broadcast live on Mount Vernon Community School Corporation's YouTube site and will be recorded. The medium is the recorded medium that will be utilized. The recording will then be able to be viewed again on the Mount Vernon Community School site as well as the Mount Vernon Education Foundation site following this meeting. So for our candidates this evening, just so you understand, and I know that I shared this with you prior to this evening, you will have one minute for an opening statement, two minutes for a closing statement, and two minutes to answer each question. Opening and closing statements and questions will rotate in alphabetical order. The timekeeper is sitting in the back row. When there is half a minute left on your speaking time, the timeskeeper will signal 30 seconds, indicating that you have 30 seconds to finish your answer. At 15 seconds, the timekeeper will signal that you have 15 seconds. Please wrap up when you see the hand sign. If you continue to speak after the stop hand is held up, I will say thank you and move on to the next speaker. Please note that the camera to the side of, oh, I should say to the side of you, will be broadcasting live at this time. So let's get started, if we may. So please take one minute to introduce yourself, share why you are running for school board, as well as your conviction to Mount Vernon and the most recent work history that you have. And we're going to start, again, like this in alphabetical order, with Kelly Freeman.
Thanks, Renee. Hi, I'm Kelly Freeman. I currently work for Carmontay Schools. I've been in public education for 36 years. I was a classroom teacher for most, many of those years. In the past 18 or so, I've been doing the job that I am, have now, which is transition coordinator. I'm running for the board because I witnessed firsthand what a remarkable school system we have through my own children who graduated from here and my husband, who taught at the high school for 41 years. I feel like our community has a great place for public education. As a classroom teacher, I feel like I have a unique perspective on what teachers need and what happens in schools. I feel like that's a value to the, to the school. I want to continue to be a voice for taxpayers and teachers so that we can keep moving forward with our growth. And is that 15 seconds or is that time? I can't remember. Okay. And I want to ensure that we continue to provide parents opportunities to be on committees and give their opinion so that everybody can be involved in their children's education. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Shannon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Shannon Walls. My husband Matt and I live in McCordsville. We are the proud parents of two Mount Vernon graduates. Our oldest son Zachary graduated in 2012 and then 2016 from Ball State University with a degree in biology. Our youngest son Blake was our pandemic graduate in the class of 2020 and is currently a junior at Purdue University studying aviation and serving in the Air National Guard. We also have a lovely daughter-in-law Mallory that joined our family three years ago. I'm currently employed as the Sales Manager for an Indiana-based distributor, Commercial Food Systems, and co-owner of Aqua Leak Solutions and Get to Know Me. I'm seeking my third term on this board because I'm extremely proud of the work that we've done over the last eight years, but I don't feel that I'm done. And I believe that we're at a pivotal time in Mount Vernon's future. And I think the experience that I can bring to this position will be very valuable as we move forward.
Josh.
First, I wanted to thank the Education Foundation for hosting this forum. My name is Josh Worth, and I'm a Mount Vernon graduate and a father of a fifth grader at Mount Country Elementary and a freshman at Mount Vernon High School. My wife is also a Mount Vernon graduate. Some of my best memories were from my times as student and athlete in Mount Vernon. I want my kids to have the opportunities for positive experiences as well. Outside my role as a parent, I've been a firefighter with Indianapolis Fire Department for the last nine years. I'm not a seasoned politician or a public speaker. I'm a parent and member of this community that cares deeply about our schools, kids, and community. I was inspired to run for school board after witnessing the challenges that my kids, other families, and staff were facing in the last few years. I think the district could benefit from a new perspective and voice on the board. I believe it's critically important that the current parent point of view be represented in the leadership of our schools. I want to make a positive impact on the community that I grew up in, but most importantly, I want to help keep this community a place that we're all proud to live and raise our kids.
Question number one. In your view, what have the district done well over the last five years? What are some of the challenges and opportunities? We're going to start with Shannon.
There are so many things I could say about the last five years in this district, but I'm going to start with my board position. What I believe that we've done really well as a board is we've been a cohesive professional board who always puts the needs of our students first and our staff first. We've had to make some really difficult decisions over the last few years. And we may not always begin on the same page, but as a board, we've been able to cohesively come together to find effective solutions for our students' needs. The other thing that I think this district's done really well is we've put a great emphasis on community involvement. I'm really proud of that. This district is the heart of our community. And if we have strong community involvement, we have a stronger school district. And this has included many opportunities from our Mount Vernon Ambassador Program to many focus group opportunities we've provided. So if you want to get involved in Mount Vernon in a positive way, there's lots of opportunities. I'm also very proud of the financial transparency demonstrated by this administration and board. We've been faced with so many things that have been completely out of our hands as a school district. We were faced with a $1.3 million tax loss with the newly funded fire territory that we supported 100% because our community needed that. And a $3 million tax loss because of, we were losing those tax funds from being a distressed district. We had to take necessary steps as a district to set Mount Vernon up for future growth. And that included analyzing every dollar spent at Mount Vernon. In the last five years, we financed two bond series, saving us over $7 million in repayments to our taxpayers. We've established a debt service philosophy that we only grow our debt proportionally, never borrowing or using more than what we need. We've also finally been able to establish a healthy rainy day fund because there are emergencies that come up. I never knew that school roofs were such a problem until I got on the school board. And we have a lot of school roof issues. It takes a lot of money to fix those. I believe our biggest challenge as we go forward is the inevitable growth that's happening in this community. It's crucial that we proceed cautiously while maintaining a vision for the future. And it's a very delicate balance. We've worked for hours and hours on a future growth plan, holding all the parties accountable as we move forward. This isn't just about bricks and mortar and building these buildings. It's about our students' futures. And every step along the way has to go along with what is best for kids. And I think I have a real vision of what, as a community member and as a parent, what we want for our children in this district.
Thank you, Shannon. Josh.
Mount Vernon does a lot of things really well, the most notable being communication. Dr. Parker's traveling talks, superintendent summaries, videos, and mainstream newsletters are all very well done, engaging, and informative. The district also implemented Parent Square to connect staff and parents more efficiently. During what seemed to be the never-ending days of at-home learning under 2020, Dr. Parker gave all the staff and families a gift of a desperately needed day of rest, a real snow day. That was a truly memorable experience and well-received by the community during a time that we all needed something positive. The pandemic created many challenges, such as addressing learning loss and uncharted social concerns. The disappointing struggles that staff and families endured during that time are a reminder that it's important to get back to some of the basics of education to help students and staff recover and return to some normalcy. The growing community presents opportunities for the district to expand program offerings and build new facilities. However, managing that growth while maintaining the small-town feel that we all enjoy will be a challenge. Mount Vernon has done a good job making new families feel welcome in our community, which will continue to be important as we grow. Also among the biggest challenges we're facing right now is combating teacher shortages, staff burnout, and turnover. I feel we must be more inventive in supporting our teachers and staff in a way that allows them to focus on academics and stay within their comfort zones. We also have to get creative in attracting committed support staff with increasing competition in the area. Opinions aside, passing the operating referendum should assist our schools in maintaining smaller class sizes, offering more competitive wages to staff, and replenishing losses with the operations fund.
Thank you, Josh. Kelly, please.
Thank you. I believe we've done a lot of things well over the last few years. We voted a sustainable budget in 2019. Our cash flow was at a level that it wasn't able to handle our monthly expenses. And now we have a cash flow that easily handles that so that we don't have to borrow money to take care of those needs. Our teachers have done an excellent job teaching our students. Our I-Learn scores in language arts, math, and science are above the state average in every grade except one, and in that grade, it's one point below. We've consistently given teachers raises, and we've closed the gap for those teachers that between the years of 2009 and 2013 didn't get a raise. We've worked hard to make sure those teachers have been caught up. We developed a future growth plan because we have to. We can't stop the growth, so we have to be prepared for it. We have an ongoing process for reevaluating our contracts with vendors so that we're always looking at ways to save money. We return to textbook adoptions in all areas so that teachers have the materials that they need when they're teaching. We have a comprehensive building maintenance plan so that we don't let all the carpet in one building have to be replaced at the same time, so that that expense is managed at a better pace. We have, I think Shannon mentioned this, a rainy day fund. Our current rainy day fund balance, it's around $3 million. A lot of school systems don't have that, and we've been able to maintain that. There's money that goes into that each year to maintain it. We can borrow from it if we need to, but we always put that back. The challenges we have are, as I said, the inevitable growth and, as Josh said, retaining the highly effective teachers that we have. We have to make sure that we're doing things to keep them here. And I think we have to make sure that our policies and our programs align with our community values. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to start with Josh this. It's time for our next question. How can we, as a school district, attract and retain high-quality staff members? As a school board member, how might you demonstrate support?
With the recent changes in the job market landscape, it only makes sense that we can attract and retain high-quality staff members by offering more competitive wages. The operating referendum will help alleviate some of this concern, but we could offer professional development and loyalty incentives to let employees know that we want them to stay. Money aside, we should demonstrate to our staff that we care about them and we're behind them. Maintaining quality subpools will comfort teachers needing to be out of the classroom for an extended period. We can position our schools to combat staffing issues for years to come by encouraging students to take interest in a career in education with a Grow Our Own program. We want prospective and current employees to feel invested in the Mount Vernon community. Employees want to feel their work is recognized and their efforts valued. This goes beyond teachers, but to all administrative and support staff. It takes everyone working towards a common goal to be successful. We can retain staff by not asking too much of them with new material outside of the grade level or subject area, allowing them to focus on what they're comfortable with and have been trained to do. Encouraging staff to create connections with their students is important for the learning environment, but we should have clear expectations for sharing personal beliefs and opinions to avoid questions and concerns from families. As a school board member, supporting our staff will be of the utmost importance. I'll be volunteering, listening, and engaging our staff to show that Mount Vernon School Board values their efforts and contributions to student success.
Kelly.
Well, we have to absolutely pay well. And as a teacher, you know, none of us go into teaching thinking that we're going to get rich. We know that teacher pay is not always the best, but we have to do better at giving teachers raises. I feel like we've done that in the last several years. We've given our teachers raises. Our insurance package is also better than some of the surrounding districts or the standards. That's also attractive to teachers, so keeping that in check is something we have to do as a board. I think even, I don't know if it's more important or it's as important, in my opinion, as a teacher, we have to support our teachers. And we have to let them know that we value and appreciate all the hard things they do every day. When a teacher needs support from the building administrators, they have to feel comfortable going to those building administrators. I feel like we do a good job with that, but as a board member, we have to continue to keep an eye on that and make sure those things are happening. When the teacher's dealing with any kind of issue, they need to feel comfortable going to even the superintendent if they want to. We talk a lot about building relationships with students, but it's just as important, in my opinion, that building administrators have time to build relationships with their building staff. A teacher needs to feel comfortable going to anybody with any struggle that they have. And so it's important that they are allotted that time, that we're not putting so much on their plate that they can't have the time to build relationships with their staff. We also recently obtained a portion of a grant from IDOE for the attract, prepare, and retain grant, which is a partnership with Ball State so that teachers, or people who are interested in going into teaching can have experiences here at Mount Vernon. And then when they go to Ball State to the teaching program there, they can come back and have experiences here through student teaching and practicum and those things. And that way, we can attract the best. Thank you.
Shannon.
Currently, right now, there are almost 2,800 positions open in the state of Indiana in education. These aren't just teaching positions. This is straight off the DOE website, almost 2,800 positions. There are, the competition is high and the applicant pool is very low. This is not exclusive to Indiana, but it's a national issue, and this district is not exempt from that. I believe it's crucial that we not only are a district that you choose to send your kids to, but it's a district that you want to come work at. We have to continue to be able to offer competitive salaries to our employees. And we've worked very hard to do that over the past several years, realigning our pay scales to be more competitive with the local industries and the competing districts that we have in Hancock County. It's not always about the money either, because that's definitely why, like Kelly said, that's not why most of our teachers and staff have gone into education. So we need to be a district where our staff feel valued, they feel heard, and they feel respected as part of the Mount Vernon family. As Kelly mentioned, we have this new and exciting partnership with Ball State University. I'm really excited to see where that goes. And I think that will really encourage and foster and develop our own students and hopefully encourage them to come back to Mount Vernon and be employees right here in the district. I love currently seeing so many of our students that have come back now that, it wasn't that long ago, we were cheering for them on the basketball court or the field, and now they're in our buildings giving back to the kids today. And they have a real impact with our younger students. When I was board president, we implemented a climate survey to all employees as a board. And this measured different aspects of the work environment. And I'm committed to continue this practice through surveys and thought exchanges with our staff. It's important that we not only issue these surveys, but we actually analyze the data that comes back from it, and we give our employees a voice at Mount Vernon. Thank you.
So our next question is circles around guiding principles. So as a board member, what would be your guiding principles on which you will base your decision-making as a school board member? We're going to start with Kelly.
Thanks. My guiding principle as an educator all these years and as a board member has always been do what's best for students. That should always be the question that we ask with anything that we're doing, any decision that we're making. I feel like we've done that in a couple of things that we've done along the way. We keep track of class sizes. We, actually, the board has a spreadsheet that has all the classrooms and all the class sizes so that we can make sure that classrooms aren't having so many students that teachers can't do their job effectively. Anybody who's taught for longer than one day knows that a small class size is the way teachers can hone in on those students that need that extra help. So that's always been a mantra of mine, is that we're checking the class sizes and making sure class sizes aren't getting too big because that's what's best for students. We hired instructional coaches for those students who needed extra help after the pandemic with that learning loss. And that money was purchased through grant money, but as a board, we made sure that we asked the questions, is this going to be sustainable? And we were assured that it is, and so that those coaches can stay in place. Thanks to the community, the referendum was passed, and we can have an SRO officer in every building. That's absolutely what's best for kids and teachers, because if teachers feel safe and comfortable where they are, then their learning is going to be easier. The trainings that we have for teachers to be able to handle any crisis is important because our students have to feel safe, and when they feel safe, they can learn. But the bottom line is, anything we do through the board has to always ask, what's best for kids? Are we doing what's best for kids? Not the easiest thing, but what's always best for kids. Thank you.
There are a couple guiding principles that stand out to me when I think about this question. The first one is to remember that my identity and this position is with this entire community that I represent as a board member. But my main why will always be for the students. It can be very difficult in the educational environment to not want to make decisions with your heart always, because we're all here because we're passionate about education. But in this position, you don't get to make mistakes. So there's a careful balance there as a board member. I promise to always make decisions based on the data that I've received. I've proven in the past that if I'm not comfortable with a motion or something that's on the table, I will make a motion to table it until I have all of the data as an informed board member to make a decision. We have a community responsibility to be the voice for everyone. We have a civic responsibility as elected officials and to uphold the laws presented by the state of Indiana and to uphold the laws, the bylaws that we have as a board of trustees. The end result to me will always be the 300 hands that we shake at graduation every year. I sit up there every year, and I look out at those kids, and I think, did we do everything possible? Did we give these kids every tool they need to go in to the market and to be successful in their pathway? And the answer has to be yes every time because we don't get to make mistakes.
Josh.
As a school board member, I will base my decisions on several guiding principles, such as integrity, transparency, community collaboration, and being true to my conservative values. Our vision statement states that we are where parents choose to send their children, students are successful, highly qualified personnel desire to work, and the community is proud to support. I know a lot of families that feel tremendously let down by the decisions made during the pandemic, and I feel this was a missed opportunity to really come together and show our strength as a community. My voice for conservative values and need for community collaboration could have benefited the board during such a difficult time. Above all else, I'm a parent first, and I believe that parents should have a say in their children's education. We should continue to keep not only our students' best interests in mind, but also remember the parents that choose to send their kids to Mount Vernon. Our parents have high expectations of our school corporation, as they should. Efforts for transparency have been made in updating the district website to be more informative with regards to our curriculum and standards. I believe we need to consider our parents' and teachers' values when implementing new material and reviewing books for approval. Our school should be a safe and comfortable space for our kids to focus on their studies without having to deal with controversial issues amongst their peers or from influential leaders. I've also been made aware, many residents that felt blindsided by the financial effects of the referendum. Financial transparency with our community members and residents, including those that don't have kids at the school, is important. As a member of the school board, I would make it a priority to do my due diligence in making the most informed financial decisions possible and solicit as much community feedback as necessary prior to making important decisions. I believe my guiding principles will be an asset in collaborating with the other board members, administrators, and our community.
Our next question is, as a board member, you will be approached by parents and community members regarding concerns that they have. How do you imagine you would respond to their concerns? Please share hypothetical approaches to, one, concerns with a teacher, two, concerns with a principal, three, concerns with a district practice. We're going to be with you, Josh.
Listening to the community is the most important thing we can do. People want to be taken seriously and have their concerns heard. I've been a member of this community for over 20 years, having kids currently enrolled. I know many parents already talk and share their concerns with one another. Our administration has always been helpful and responsive to my concerns in the past, and that is something that I plan to pay forward. As far as hearing specific concerns as a board member, it's important to be an active listener to gain a full understanding of the concerns without making hasty statements. Whether it be a concern with a teacher or a principal, I would need to be sure that concerns are directed through the proper channels to be sure they're addressed appropriately. Following our chain of command and allowing the superintendent and administrative staff the opportunity to respond is critical. Concerns with the district practice would be a board concern and should be addressed on that level in collaboration with our administrative staff. In some cases, legal advice may need to be considered. Gathering relevant information to make an informed decision and have productive conversations is essential. Not having served on the board before puts me at a disadvantage in answering this question, but I will say that I'm ready to listen to our community and ready to work as a team member on our school board to make informed decisions to help our schools and community.
Kelly.
Thank you. This absolutely does happen as a board member, and I've been approached by taxpayers, teachers, and parents along the way regarding concerns that they have. And in any situation, when you get a call, the most important thing is to first listen. And I always try very hard to remember that whatever I'm hearing is one side of the story, that there's the other side that I may not, may not have heard yet. And that there's, there's a chain of command for any situation. If it's a teacher calling, then you want to ask, have they talked to the principal or the department chair? If it's a parent, then have they talked to the principal? Have they talked to the teacher first, then the principal? There's always a chain of command in those situations. I will never not listen when someone calls. I think it's part of the job as a board member to listen to people's concerns. I will, however, always remind whoever I've talked to that I'm only one board member and I don't have any exclusive power over anyone or anything. The board is the boss of the superintendent, not of anything else. So that's important that people understand that. I think these situations, in these situations, it's important for any member, any board member to know and understand that one board member cannot make promises or changes based on their own personal agenda. The boardroom and education in general, in my opinion, is not a place for egos. Everyone has to be willing to work together for the greater good. And it has to be the greater good for not just one set of students or not one club or not one sport. It has to be the greater good for everybody that's involved. And that's the only way our district keeps moving forward, is if we keep that in mind. Thank you.
When approached by a parent or a guardian, it is important as a board member that we share the steps necessary to resolve their concerns. If you have a concern with a teacher, have you had a conversation with that teacher? And if it wasn't resolved at that level, have you worked with the building administration? As a board member, we can facilitate and offer direction for a family member to help them resolve their situation. The same would apply to any concern with any Mount Vernon employee. Again, there is, as they've both said, there's a chain of command that has to happen before something gets to the school board. As far as concerns with a community member, I am first and foremost a representative of this community. It's my job to listen to those concerns, but to also share the great things that are happening at Mount Vernon. And I'll be the first to admit, I don't always know the answer to every concern or question that's brought to me from the community. But it's my job, if I don't know the answer, to do the homework and the research so I can properly respond back to my community and let them know what the next steps are. I will have and I will continue to encourage this type of behavior in this district. Dr. Parker has done a great job with this with being accessible. He gives out his personal cell phone, as I have as well. And we can only be better when we work together, and I will continue to do that for hopefully the next four years.
While I need to apologize to you and all my excitement of listening to your question, I skipped question number four. So we're going to go back to that question. With Mount Vernon's expected continued growth and limited financial resources, what direction and goals would you like to see Mount Vernon accomplish in the future? We're going to start with you, Shannon.
I thought maybe I missed something, but I'm glad you came back to that. I've answered this slightly in a previous response, but I'll restate a little bit that I believe these are the biggest challenges we face as a growing district. We have to continue to make decisions today that will impact this district 10, 15, 20 years down the road. We can't wait until we're there and then say, oh, gosh, we should have. This has to be considered with all building projects, land acquisitions, student programming, and staffing needs. We have to proceed cautiously, but continue to move forward. We have to be a district that's preparing our students for the work environment of tomorrow. And it's a delicate balance between what we need and what we can afford as a district to do. Student programming should always be at the top of the Y and guide our decisions. I'm encouraged that Mount Vernon is taking a more aggressive step in our vocational programming and exposing students at a younger age. We've made great strides in this area over the last couple of years, and I'm really excited about this. These programs have included aviation, welding, health science, criminal justice, lots of great vocational opportunities for our students as well. But I'm a firm believer that we have to celebrate all of that success with those students as well. Some of the financial points I mentioned earlier will be key in affording us the flexibility to move forward in a fiscally responsible manner. When I first came on this board eight years ago, we were holding SOS, Save Our School Garage Sales, to buy paper for the classrooms. My family and I were at the elementaries at night pulling weeds out of the landscape because we couldn't afford the landscaping costs for this district. So we have come a long way, and we've worked so hard to put ourselves in a financial position that we can move forward cautiously and responsibly. We've come a long way.
I think we need to be conservative with our taxpayers' money, but we are in a growing area, so balance is going to be important. Transparency in where we are getting our money and how we are spending that money is going to be important to gain and keep community support, especially after so many people have expressed concerns during my campaign so far. I believe we need to support our teachers as a pillar of our school. Aside from the obvious and making sure they're paid appropriately, it doesn't cost much to make sure our teachers know that they're supported by our community in schools. Fancy buildings and landscaping look great from the outside looking in, but the heart of our classroom is our teachers. Mount Vernon does a lot of great things for our staff, but there's always room for improvement. Maintaining smaller classroom sizes is a goal I think we can agree as a community is important to achieve. This alone will alleviate some stress from our staff as well as put our students into a more successful position to succeed. Keeping our small-town feel is something that will help keep Mount Vernon School special. Continuing to offer and add extracurricular and vocational opportunities so students can pursue their interests outside of the classroom is another goal that will add to the success of our students and appeal of our schools. There's a million different answers to this question that would benefit our students and schools, and I think an important approach going forward is to listen to our community and let them tell us what they want for the future while being responsible with state and taxpayer funds.
School finance is complicated at best, and as a teacher, I probably should have had a better understanding of how it worked, but until I got on the board, I didn't really understand how school finance worked, and it's complicated, and I still have to listen very intently to our CFO when he's giving us information. And while we can't control what the state does, how much money they give us, and we can't control the hoops that we have to sometimes jump through to spend it, we can control how transparent we are, and we can control how responsible we are with our finances. And I think because we are growing, we have to always be looking at ways to save money. And Shannon mentioned this a little earlier. Not long ago, our CFO sold new bonds to pay off old bonds, and because the new bonds had a lower interest rate, we were able to save about $7 million. And those are the kind of things we have to keep doing so that we can be prepared for any things that happen, those roofs that seem to always be leaking or the HVAC that goes out. We have to have money for those kinds of things. I believe another goal that we have to have is to continue to manage the growth. And we've changed our policy on our transfer students. It used to be that somebody could transfer in at any time, and now there's a two-week window. We keep an eye on the capacity of each building so that if one building is close to capacity, we close off that building to transfer students, and that's another thing I think we have to keep doing so that we can make sure that the people who are living here, they have space in the buildings for those individuals. I think we have to continue to go in the direction, and Shannon mentioned this too earlier, of looking ahead and making sure we're planning for the future. What's Mount Vernon going to look like 25 years from now when none of us are here anymore? We have to make sure we're being thoughtful of that, and we're managing where we put buildings and what we spend the money on so that we're not leaving a mess to clean up down the road for other people. Thank you.
Thank you. What are your best hopes for the future of Mount Vernon School District? How would your aspirations benefit our students? And we're going to start with Kelly.
I want our district to continue to do the great things it's already doing when it comes to educating our kids. My own children, as I mentioned, graduated from Mount Vernon, and they were very well-prepared for the real world and their secondary education. In fact, they both told me at different times in their college careers, one is still in college, but she said this her freshman year, that she felt better prepared than most of the students around her. And she directly named teachers and what they had done to help prepare her. My son said the same things, that he felt like the education he got at Mount Vernon prepared him very well for the next phase of life. So I want us to continue to do those kinds of things by supporting our teachers and doing all the things we've already mentioned. I also hope that Mount Vernon can stay the family-centered and close-knit community that we've always been. And I sometimes see that slipping away as we grow and we get bigger. And we can't stop people from building houses here, but we can make decisions that are best for our students and the values of our community. I want us to continue along with all the other obvious things we've mentioned along the way. I want us to treat our employees and students as the family they are. I want us to care about what happens to people that are here. I want the teachers and community members to be comfortable reaching out to board members and principals and superintendents. You know, that may sound corny or simple-minded, but I think that's what makes Mount Vernon the place it is. We feel like family and we care about each other. And as a board member, I feel like I'm saying that a lot, that we have to make sure we're putting people first. It's not about the buildings, it's about the people that are here.
I work with school districts all over the state of Indiana, Illinois, and Ohio, and I can tell you, what we have here is very special. I don't believe that a lot of districts have, what Kelly said, that family approach that we've had in this community. And I believe this entire community feels that way about this school district. As we grow, it's going to be really important that we honor the history of Mount Vernon and what built this place. We can't get too big for our britches, if you will. We have new teachers and new administrators from outside of Mount Vernon that are coming here every year, and they have to also understand who we are and what we stand for in this community. I believe it's also crucial that we see our students for more than test scores. We need to ensure that all of our students are learning at the highest level possible, but I also believe that our schools are more than a letter grade. Students come to school, of course, for their academics, but many come for a lot of other reasons. It can be for a hot meal, someone that needs their physical needs met. You know, maybe they don't have clothes, maybe the hygiene needs some attention, maybe they need some social and emotional support in the classroom so that they can learn. For many students, it's their safe place. We must continue also to provide a rigorous curriculum with a strong focus on math, language arts, and STEM, but be mindful of the different types of pathways that our students may take in their future. I will continue to encourage this district to expose our students at even a younger age to these opportunities. I think it's really important as a district that we prepare our students when they get to that eighth-grade level and they're planning that coursework for their high school, that they have a clear direction of what type of diploma they want to seek and what type of coursework can help them. I have really encouraged this administration to strengthen our counseling department so that our students are guided properly along the way, that they don't enter those high school years blindly. We have to be better at this. And most importantly, we need to make sure our students feel safe when they come to school and our staff feel safe. There's no room in our buildings for any violence. Our partnerships with Fortville and McCordville Police Department have been extremely valuable, and with the referendum passing, now we're able to have a school resource officer in every building. But it's not enough. We must continue to reevaluate our safety and our security plans so that all teachers are comfortable in case we ever, God forbid, would have an emergency here at Mount Vernon. We're doing great things at Mount Vernon, but we can always be better.
Looking to the future, I believe one of the most important goals is to stay committed to our community's values. I want to see Mount Vernon continue to be a safe and wholesome place that parents are proud to send their kids to school and encourages families to stay within our community. Allowing parents in our district to have a voice in their children's education will encourage support from families in our schools. It's my hope that we can use our resources responsibly, and by doing that, will enable us to recruit and retain committed staff. I would love to see our teaching staff who are confident they are supported by administration and the school board and want to spend their career serving our schools. My goal of transparency will bring unity and trust between the community and the school district as we navigate the future and the challenges that the growth will bring. Maintaining small classroom sizes and our small-town feel will continue to keep Mount Vernon a special place for everyone and continue to provide students the most effective learning environment. I would love to see our academics continue to recover from the pandemic learning loss, being supported by essential learning and unhindered by any controversy. We need to be sure we have adequate supports for students that might be having a hard time without disrupting the education of others. We should continue to offer the best individual learning for special education students and continue offering more vocational opportunities so we can meet the needs and aspirations of all of our students. I've always been proud of the Mount Vernon community, which is why my wife and I decided to raise our family here. We know many second-generation families already, and it's my hope to continue to be a community that families wish to stay in for generations to come.
Thank you very much. So to sort of wrap up this evening, we want to give each of the candidates two minutes to sort of put their final review statement together. And we're going to start with Kelly.
All right. In closing, I want to thank Renee and the Mount Vernon Education Foundation for hosting this event. I know it's a lot of work, and we appreciate your time and effort to get this information out to everyone, so thank you. Most people think that being on the board is one meeting a month, but it's so much more than that. There can sometimes be several meetings a week, there can be phone calls and emails and board packets and board trainings, and it's a time commitment, and I'm willing to make that time commitment because I truly care what happens here at Mount Vernon, and I want to be involved. My perspective as a public school teacher allows me to bring a level of understanding that some people outside of the education field might not bring. And I never really realized how important that was until I was on the board as a teacher. I rarely went to a board meeting, and I didn't realize all the decisions that were being made that teachers really don't think about on a day-to-day basis because they're busy teaching. So I think my perspective can really help the board in moving forward as we continue to grow. You know, I'm not here, I'm not following any agenda of any other person or any other group. I'm here serving and running again because this is where my heart is. I'm proud of the eight years that I've served. I know that some people say eight years is too long to be on the board, but that just means that I have experience and I've been educated on the policies and the issues that are now at hand. My knowledge and my experience will allow me to hit the ground running and continue the initiatives that we've started. I feel that my passion and commitment to attend meetings, go to the trainings, be involved, and listen to anyone who has concerns makes me a very well-qualified candidate to be on the board, and I would sure appreciate your vote. Thanks.
I'd first like to also thank the Education Foundation for hosting tonight's forum. I did not make the decision to run again without perfectly considering that decision with my family, my husband. And I thought a lot about where I was in my life and if this was the right time for me to continue my position here. Because if you're going to do this, you have to be all in. It certainly does not mean that you attend one meeting a month. It is a very large time commitment, and I knew that I was still 100% committed to this school district, the community, and the students that I've served. In fact, I'm at a stage in my life where I have more time than ever to commit to the district. In eight years on this board, I've missed two meetings. One was because I had COVID and they wouldn't let me come then, and one was a planned vacation with my family. That's a pretty good track record unless you're Kelly Freeman and you've never missed a board meeting. You don't have to have kids in school to love kids, and I love our kids and I love this district. I know that my experience on this board will be crucial as we navigate the next few years. We are in the middle of one of our largest building projects that we've had in many years at Mount Vernon. We've spent hours and hours already meeting with contractors, and I know that I can hit the ground running without missing a beat, and I feel confident that I still have value to bring to those meetings. And as we proceed, I'm also very proud of the great work that's happening in our buildings. In fact, all five schools were recently noted as highly effective, receiving their school accreditation. This is only achieved by maintaining and identifying areas that have impact on student learning. Again, that has to be our common decision point. It's been an honor to serve this community on this board. I'm asking for four more years. It is more important than ever as residents that you vote in your local elections. Please go vote. Early voting site is open in Greenfield. Our early voting site at Mount Vernon opens next Monday, and it takes less than five minutes for you to make an impact in your community. Thank you.
I understand my answers may not be as flashy and impressive as eight-year board members, but we have to start somewhere. Running for our school board is not something that I had to do. I'm here because I want to help make a difference. In my heart, I'm a father who wants all of our kids to have the educational opportunities and experiences that I had over 20 years ago at Mount Vernon. I truly believe that the district could benefit from a new perspective, especially that of someone like myself who has children attending our schools. As uncomfortable as it's been, I would be remiss if I didn't remind the public that we are all on the same team, and there are three separate names on the ballot for the two positions available. You will not see a two-person team versus one community member on the ballot. If I'm elected, I will have the privilege of working with one of these ladies. Together, we will be able to team her experience with my new focus and insight, become more of an asset to Mount Vernon for years to come. I want our students to have the best educational opportunities available to them so that they are best prepared for a successful future. I'm hopeful for the opportunity to collaborate with the other board members, our community, staff, and administrators to continue working towards the most successful Mount Vernon schools. Thank you.
Well, in conclusion, I'd like to thank Kelly and Shannon and Josh for not only participating in this evening's candidate forum, but their willingness to serve and their love for our Mount Vernon community. So thank you. For those attending this evening or watching from home, the foundation would like to take a moment to encourage everyone, all the eligible voters, to go to one of the multiple voting sites within our county, one of which is going to be located in this building, and exercise their right to vote on or before Tuesday, November 8th. Your vote makes a difference. It makes an impact, especially in our school district. Thank you for attending, and thank you for participating, and we wish you all a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee.
Thanks, Renee.